Okay, so the hour is five o'clock. I'd like to call the planning board meeting of March 20, 2025 to order. Persons who wish to do so are invited to attend in person or view the meeting at the referenced link. For instructions and guidance on how to join the meeting remotely, please note that in-person meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technology problems interrupt the remote connection. Called to order, we'll introduce staff. And board members to my far left, right, I should say, is our new member, Steve Yost. Thank you.
Yeah.
Great to be here.
We have Sean Henry, Beverly LeBoken, Jane Ramsden, our vice chair. I'm Rick Noonan, the chair. Doug Cook, David, and that's it for members. And then we have our planning, our community development director, Alex Copeland. We have Greg Cattamatory, our planning director, and Eric Kendally, our senior planner. Trying to get you promoted still. But we're a little heavy on staff tonight, so. So that takes care of that. First thing in the agenda this evening is an A and R application for site. I'm sorry, it's a site plan review approval under GZO 5.8.2C submitted by Ellison Law LLC on behalf of GX-PH1 LLC for creation and construction of a new parking lot at One Gloucester Crossing, assessors map 262, Lot 13. Attorney Ellison, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Deborah Ellison, Ellison Law Office, 63 Middle Street, Gloucester. I'm here representing GX-PH1 LLC. The engineer tonight is Tim Power from PVI Site Design, and he is on Zoom. And, Mr. Chairman, if I may share my screen. First of all, if I can orient you to this, this is the site that we're talking about with the two new parking lots. Over here across the street are the Halyard Apartments. This is Gloucester Crossing Road, Schoolhouse Road, Market Street that leads you up to the Market Basket, and behind it are, is the main part of the shopping center. We're seeking a site plan approval of 81 Spaces Parking Lot to be located on a portion of One Gloucester Crossing Road, and it will be used for Gloucester Crossing Employee Parking as well as off-site parking for the Bowport Hotel. The building inspector has recently approved the relocation of the Bowport Off-Site Parking to this location, and the city engineer has improved the stormwater plans and the reports for this location. We appeared before the Conservation Commission last night, and they were satisfied with the stormwater and the plans for the parking lot portion of the proposed improvements based on the city engineer's sign-off. The Conservation Commission hearing was extended, however, because there are other aspects of the project unrelated to the parking lots that they wanted additional information on. As you may recall, we were before you last year, I was before you last year, on behalf of the Bowport Hotel with regard to a 50-space off-site parking lot in this same location. The planning board had concerns about the waivers that we were requesting, and because the parking lot wasn't used very often, you asked us to seek a modification from the city council. I was somewhat skeptical that we could obtain that, but we made the request. The city council had no interest in entertaining that request, so we withdrew it without prejudice. Subsequently, the current applicant, Gloucester Crossing, decided to pursue a parking lot that would service not only Bowport but also its employees in the Gloucester Crossing businesses. After the years of operation, they've determined that extra parking is often needed during peak hours such as holiday seasons. And as this need was identified, Gloucester Crossing has continued to develop, and they made sense for us to pursue this all as one application. Unlike the previous application, this proposed parking lot requests only one waiver, and that's from subdivision rules and regulations 4.6.2C, which requires a minimum of four feet of cover over drain pipes. We are required, that requirement cannot be met because we need to tie into the existing drainage infrastructure. The waiver minimizes the disruption of the existing conditions, and everything in the existing stormwater pond has stabilized over the years, so it is best to leave it in that condition. The engineer can explain more about the waiver if you have any specific questions. Otherwise, we do meet all of the requirements. So this site shows an envelope, and this envelope is for a future building and associated parking. There is currently, the applicant is currently speaking to a local nonprofit about developing the remainder of the site for senior affordable housing. This is an independent project. It will have a separate application that will come before whatever boards are required in the city to approve that application once it's finalized. What I'd like to do now is to ask Tim Power of PVI Site Design to go over the plan with you.
Thank you. Good evening. Just make sure everyone can hear me okay.
We can.
Okay, great. So Deb, if you want to turn to just the first sheet, the C101 sheet, sorry, the second sheet.
Tim, just for the record, if you don't mind stating your full name and association.
Absolutely. Timothy Power for PVI Site Design, registered civil engineer in Massachusetts, representing the applicant. So, as Deb said, fairly straightforward projects, two sort of distinct parking lots tied together on the pad with some reserved space for the future building. As you can see to the left of the page, there's an existing stormwater basin that was built as part of the early construction back in 2008 and '09 to support both the Market Street roadway and the proposed ALR building that was designed at that time. The plan includes here, we tried to include everything we needed. We have snow storage shown, independent of that future pad. I know there's some snow storage being used there now. That will obviously go away, but this can stand alone on its own. What's there? One important aspect I want to remind everyone is there's a power line easement on the left, really going from almost top to bottom on that left page over the stormwater basin. So that provided some limitations for us in the way of lighting and landscaping due to that easement. We are proposing lights, as shown here, two on the smaller lot, and then three at the top as well. We had a photometric plan provided in our design set we can show later on. And then Deb, if you want to go to the next page. So this is our stormwater design, very basic, nothing too complicated. We're trying to have each lot sort of act independently, so each one has their own chamber system. And again, as Deb mentioned, the future building and development will have probably a third system to support it and sort of, and stand alone in the future. Everything here is caught stormwater-wise, treated, recharge systems, control up to the 100-year storm. There is an overflow into the basin. That has all been modeled. We dug out the old design models by the previous engineers. We evaluated what was leaving that, going into that pond and leaving that pond, and we made sure to match those flows so that it retains the intent of that original design that's there. No real utilities to speak of, other than the stormwater and electric power for the lighting. Otherwise, no need for anything, any future stubs for the development, again, will be part of that future project. So really just the infrastructure needed for the stormwater management. I know Conservation was curious to know, but there's no stormwater other than outside landscaped edges flowing into those wetlands. Everything is captured and sent through the infrastructure that's been in place for some time, and the new chambers we have. Debbie, move on to the next. Well, why don't we go to the planting plan, which will have the pretty colors. Here again, so we provided a planting plan for your review with the suggested plant lists. You'll notice down in the front, near the entrance, we have some, some lower shrubs and trees. Again, that's limiting by the, the power lines up above, but where we could fit trees and other things, we've, we've added them in there. And then just to acknowledge it, Deb, the last page is the photometric plan for the, for the site. I won't spend too much time, happy to go into more detail if there's any questions on the stormwater or the design in general. I will touch on the waiver that Deb mentioned also for stormwater. In most places, we do achieve this, the four feet of cover. It's just that the pad itself, it's a little bit of a steep driveway coming up to the pad, so we didn't want to artificially raise that to make that a more difficult drive in. And then the basin, as she mentioned, you could, you know, another option would be to lower the basin, but it's well-established, it's functioning, there's vegetation there, and disturbing that just seemed not the best practice, given how well it's established today. So again, we're not asking for, asking for the waiver because we need it, but probably maintaining three feet of cover rather than four feet, so not a substantial ask there. And I think that's it for now.
And if the board would like, I can go through the plan requirements and the waivers.
That'd be great.
So we meet 5.5.1A through C. We've provided you with a site plan layout, topography, drainage, and utility plans. D requires architectural plans, since there are no buildings, we are not, we have not provided those. E and F are the landscape and lighting plans that have been provided and that Tim spoke about. This is no FEMA flood zones within the leased portion of the property. The time estimate and cost details for the project, it's six to eight weeks to construct, weather permitting, estimated cost of $300,000, which is detailed in the cost estimate that I did submit with the application. Again, 5.3 applies to residential development, which we are not doing, and 5.4 drainage calculations have been provided, as well as a full stormwater report, and we are only seeking the one waiver from the subdivision rules and regulations. And an ADA certification has been provided on Sheet C101 of the plans. With regard to the review guidelines and approvals, the conservation and protection of natural features, we are seeking to maintain as many natural features as possible, and the Conservation Commission, as I said, seems satisfied with the parking lot plan and the proposed stormwater plans. Slopes, there are no construction proposed on slopes that exceed 10%. The site is fairly level, it's minimally, minimal grading will be required, and there's no disruption of the existing natural features. With regard to improvements, no buildings or structures are proposed, none are currently located on the site, and the site will solely be used for parking lots. The parking lot is located away from the adjacent traveled ways of Gloucester Crossing and Market Street, and these streets separate the parking lot from other properties. The placement of barriers, lighting, directional signs, if we need them, and fixtures on the site will not interfere with traffic, circulation, safety, and the appropriate use of the adjacent properties, and that is all shown on the submitted plans. The parking lot will be paved, as shown on the submitted plan set. Parking spaces will be arranged and marked in accordance with GZO 4.1.4, incorporating tandem parking in the Bowport section, which is allowed under the Bowport special permit. Utilities, there are no buildings or structures on the site that require utilities. All utilities related to the parking lot are shown on the submitted plan. With regard to surface water runoff, all surface water runoff will be trained on-site, as shown on the plans and evidenced by the stormwater report. This property is not in the MI district, so that requirement does not apply. Pedestrian and vehicular safety, existing sidewalks provide a safe pedestrian access to Market Basket and along Gloucester Crossing Road to the remainder of the shopping center from the site. The character and materials of the buildings, again, that's not applicable. Zoning compliance, the proposed use is allowed under GZO 5.25.5.1 and by the Bowport special permit. It's also been designed in accordance with the dimensional requirements of 4.1 and 5.25.5.1. With regard to coastal flooding, there are no FEMA zones on the leased portion of the site, and therefore, it's not applicable, and we're happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Attorney Ellison. Questions from the board? Beverly?
We have a site plan, please. Excuse me, can we have a site plan?
Jane, put it into the microphone.
Good, thank you. It doesn't matter which one. For the benefit of people sitting in the audience and to refresh our memories, how big is the total site?
Well, the total site is all part of One Gloucester Crossing.
Oh, I see.
The whole shopping center is one site.
This is just a small portion. What's the size of the remainder portion that's vacant once the parking lots are built? Just so we have an idea of what's left for the housing portion.
I'll have to ask Tim to explain that. I know they did an analysis to make sure that there was enough for the housing.
Just give me a moment, and I can give you an area. Didn't have that quite at my fingertips.
Well, while we're waiting, can you show where the sidewalks are on the site plan?
The sidewalks go along here, and so it goes all the way down and over to Market Basket, right along Market Street.
So is that also a sidewalk on the top of the pentagram?
Or here?
Yeah.
I do not believe it is, no.
No.
So there's no sidewalk from the rear parking spaces to the sidewalk system? I guess not. You just cross the street?
Well, there are no sidewalks within the parking lots. There are sidewalks here. It begins here at the end of the parking lot.
Okay.
And then it goes out to the street, and the street has a sidewalk all the way up to Market Basket.
Okay.
It's a sidewalk also going all the way up in the other direction to Gloucester Crossing, Main Gloucester Crossing.
Okay.
No, can you hear me? Is that okay? Okay. The top portion, is that the portion for the hotel parking?
Correct.
And the reason that it is designed the way it is, is it because it's for valet parking rather than?
It could be used for, there will always be an employee of the hotel that will do the parking, so there will be someone there supervising, whether it's a bus that comes in for a conference and drops people off there, whether it's employees who park there, there'll be someone monitoring that parking, and so tandem parking was allowed.
Okay, that's why I wanted, just so everybody was clear. And then the, which would be the, on the left side portion, I'm sorry, I don't know where north is, to orient us, but is that for Gloucester Crossing parking for employees?
It's for employees. Overflow parking for employees, most likely to be used by Market Basket employees.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify what was what. Thank you. And then we'd be interested in knowing the size of the remainder site only because that gives us an idea of its capacity for residential development.
Sure, I can answer that now, if you like.
Thank you.
It's estimated about 35,000 square feet, so a little under an acre, maybe three quarters of an acre.
So does that mean, Deb, when you were presenting, you said the building envelope was both for parking and the building? Or, so there would be on that 35,000-square-foot parcel, there would be a building and additional parking?
It would be parking to serve that building. The, the current concept is that it would be senior affordable housing, and in senior housing, the parking requirements are less than they are for normal housing. So I don't know exactly, off the top of my head, exactly what they are, but we have determined that there'd be enough room for a building that could serve that purpose as well as a parking lot.
As additional parking as well? That would come, that would come in the same way into the, into the site?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay.
And this is conceptual, obviously. Anyone who decides to develop it may have other ideas.
Right. I think when, when you were before us, before, you had, there was the concern about what happens if a developer wants to come in and develop on the site, right? So you're anticipating, if I'm understanding you correctly, that there would be this parking as well as an additional use on the site with additional parking, right?
Correct.
So the, all of that is compatible from?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, the intent was to make sure that it was compatible, so that it didn't preclude some sort of development on this piece.
And will other people be able to use this for parking? So for instance, against when there are games across the street in the fields?
That's not the intent. The intent would be solely for Gloucester Crossing employees or for Bowport.
So will it be signed in some way that that's what it's?
I believe it'll be signed, and it's possible there'll be gates. I'm not quite sure how they'll handle that, but yes, it will be signed.
All right, thank you.
Other questions from board members?
I just wanted to follow up on Jane's question about sidewalk. I think we know that people will tend to take the shortest route from point A to point B, and looking at page two that shows the rest of Gloucester Crossing, we could guess that people might tend to take their direct route in the upper right, from the upper right corner of the parking. And so I wonder if there might be consideration for a sidewalk that will be the de facto path that people might take.
I think Tim can direct, address that, but I believe that a lot of that is wetlands, so I'm not certain it's very accessible, but he can probably address that a little bit more.
Yes, and I can see, and just to make sure I understood the question, it would be from the, the top right corner, yeah, going up towards that building F label there. Plenty of wetlands in there, plenty of very wetlands, not just, you know, something that could be easily built over and tough terrain. It does sort of drop down and back up again, so while a straight line on the plan, very difficult terrain to pass through. So first, I don't think people would necessarily attempt it unless, unless they're looking for a challenge. You know, it's not like open lawn or light trees, so I imagine they'll, they'll walk around as soon as they realize that.
Thank you.
The building site's not in wetlands, is it?
No.
Okay.
The wetlands are right underneath the, the hand on the screen where, where Deb has it, you can see the dash line there.
Again, this is for as much the benefit of people sitting in the audience and on Zoom to understand the scope of the project, because they don't have the paperwork in front of them. Thank you.
I'm sorry if I missed your discussion of this earlier, but in your site plan review application narrative, under factual background, you discuss two pending requests, one submitted to the building commissioner and one to city staff. Can you just talk about those a little bit?
Yes, there was a requirement in the Bowport special permit that if they wanted to relocate the parking lot, that they, off-site parking, they needed the building inspector's permission, and they needed to determine it met all the requirements. We have received that letter from the building commissioner approving the relocation to this location. There also needs, has been a request for an insubstantial modification of the Gloucester Crossing special permit, and that is pending with city staff. We're expecting to have that response fairly shortly.
So I'll just point out a couple of things, because we did review the application as, as multiple staff members have taken a look at the plans, they've provided their feedback, some, some written and some I can share as well. You did receive a memo from the city engineer. The drainage piece was a significant one to kind of see how the site is proposed to be used versus how the original drainage was designed for, for this part of Gloucester Crossing, and that's been confirmed. They're satisfied with what's been proposed. So there's an, the only other things that came out from staff review that would affect the application as it's proposed kind of relates to both, I think, your comment, Jane, as well as Steve. There was a question about whether or not there would be any access from the parking areas to the existing sidewalk network, expanding beyond what's been proposed at, at the entrance to it, whether or not there would be the possibility of having an access along the eastern boundary of the first parking field leading to the back. Otherwise, people are just going to be walking through the parking lot to get to that first, that first crossing. So that was one, one question, whether that could be accommodated. The building inspector pointed out that there, because of the, the number of spaces in, in these lots, there is the requirement to have EV charging stations for any parking lot greater than 20 spaces, so that's something that will be, have to be identified on the site. And then lastly, from the landscape plan perspective, we're all hopeful that this site is developed at some point. It's been approved in the past, it has the capacity, and we've also been looking at the condition of it for more than a decade, or close to a decade, I guess. So whether or not that there could also be a requirement for the areas that are disturbed after the parking lots are installed, that there's a kind of a looming and seeding of the site to stabilize it for the midterm, even if there is future development, which I can't imagine is anywhere inside of two years away, the way the world works. So the staff review that has also been referenced, there are very specific criteria in the Gloucester Crossing special permit that relate to modifications that can be made that can be deemed insubstantial in that they don't surpass thresholds like a use that requires additional parking or changes to the design of the buildings as proposed. This is kind of a unique one, because we're not actually seeing a building proposal, but that's when, that would have to be kind of rectified with the Gloucester Crossing special permit. So as it is, parking is allowed as a part of the shopping center, it's allowed at this location, it does have a little bit of the nuance of relating to the Bowport special permit, and that's been confirmed by the building commissioner that this is a comparable site that can satisfy that condition. So there are some other modifications that are proposed that are not associated with the site plan review relating to the road alignment and the loading dock area. Those are all under the same umbrella of, of review as to whether or not they're surpassing any thresholds associated with the Gloucester Crossing special permit.
And I stand to be corrected by Tim, but I believe there is an ability to add the sidewalk that you mentioned, and the EV charging stations locations will certainly be shown on the plan. And with regard to landscaping, I'd have to defer to him. I don't see that that would be a problem, but I just asked him to weigh in on that.
Sure, yep, I concur. All those would be fine. We did receive the comments during that meeting. We were, we didn't want to revise things multiple times, waiting to see if there are any other comments from stormwater or other departments. So acknowledged, and I think we can address all of them.
Thank you, Tim.
And if the board would like, we can certainly provide a updated plan, you know, that could be a condition of your approval if you're going in that direction.
Just the only question I have, Attorney Ellison, is the, the traffic flow between the two parking lots. I mean, I understand on the eastern side, there seems to be a little bump out that looks like it's an exit, but then it exits right into the drainage pond. So I guess the intent is that there's an in and an out, there's just one in and out, there's not the ability to circulate.
No, that, this, if this is what you're referring to, those are handicap or, they're parking spaces.
Gotcha.
And this will likely be gated, so that it will only be when Bowport is using it, or there isn't a possibility that Gloucester Crossing can use it when Bowport is not using it.
Okay, thank you.
Following up on that a little bit, I thought when we talked about this last time, this was for Bowport employees. No.
It's not restricted to that.
Okay, so there, it will always be attended, so you're not?
It's, it's, where it is now, it hasn't been used at all since the hotel opened.
Right.
The special permit states that when necessary, they needed to have these off-site spaces. So when necessary, these will be available, and Bowport would have someone in attendance to address whatever the issue was. As I said, if, if it's an event where people won't need their cars for the entire weekend, they can park here, be shuttled back to the hotel. Could be for employees if they had a shuttle service to do that, if they found they needed to do that.
I guess, I'm just following up on Rick's comment about traffic flow because if it's valet parking, it's just the valet coming and going, but if it's all the employees arriving at, you know, seven in the morning or whatever and, and then, and being shuttled over to the Bowport Hotel, that's a little bit of a different story. But it does meet all the site plan review requirements, so I'm good with that.
Your question, my recollection is that the Bowport on-site meets all of the parking requirements required by our zoning ordinance for both users and employees. And that the special request for this additional parking was more of a belt and suspenders approach of providing extra parking in case it was ever necessary. And again, I think to Attorney Ellison's point, I, it's my recollection that the former site has never been used for either guests or employees.
And just again, for the benefit of our viewing audience, the capacity of the two parking lots?
Eighty-one spaces total.
Total, okay, very good. Any further questions?
What's the anticipated need? I know you said that for the reserved space for the senior housing, it should be less than would be typical for a residential building. I'm just looking at the size of this for eighty-one spaces. And I believe I read that the, at least the original idea of what would go there in that space would be for eighty to a hundred residents. And so, I'm just comparing the sizes and wondering if there's really enough parking or what is the actual kind of anticipated fraction of typical parking that, that would need? I know that's a long-winded question, sorry.
I thought it was about a third, but I'm not sure. That's only from memory. And the ALR that was proposed, the assisted living residence, is not what will be likely to go in on this space now. And it still is conceptual. So, that will come back before the boards and they will have to either have the adequate amount of parking or they'll have to ask for a special permit to have that reduced. So, you know, that will be the burden on whoever is going to develop that pad.
But the underlying land is all owned by GXPH1 LLC, right?
GXPH1 LLC is the master landlord.
Right.
And then there is an owner that leases the entire Gloucester Crossing, but they control the site.
And then, so who is the owner of the parking lot? GX?
GXPH1 LLC, as the landlord, yes.
Okay, okay.
Just wanted to clarify, it is sixty-five percent of the parking requirement for elder housing.
Any other questions?
I'll make a motion after I just make one more comment, which is that at least I believe that this project has met all the review guidelines and approval according to our site plan review ordinance. And I believe we've agreed that the, sorry, GXPH1 will undertake looming and seeding, add more sidewalk as we discussed, EV charging stations, and provide an updated plan as conditions of, of this agreement.
Yes, that's fine.
Then I make a motion that we approve the application for site plan review approval under GZO five point eight point two C on behalf of GXPH1 LLC for the construction and creation of a new parking lot at One Gloucester Crossing Road with the conditions that I just discussed and reviewed.
Motion made by Jane Remsen. I need a second, please.
Second, then?
Second by Sean Henry. Nobody is remote. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Beverly went for the microphone. So, we are approved unanimously, thank you. And while we have a break in the action, I want to welcome our esteemed city councillor at large, Jeff Worthley, for the record. Thank you. So, this is going to take a minute. So, next under the agenda is public hearings. In accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law 40A, Section Five, in the Gloucester zoning ordinance, Section one point one one, the planning board shall consider the following proposed zoning amendment. amend those Gloucester zoning ordinance by amending Section Three dimensional requirements by adding a new section as follows. Section three point one point nine, change of use without exterior changes. This section three point one point nine shall apply to structures that are A, pre-existing non-conforming structures, B, legally existing pursuant to a valid variance or variances or special permits, or C, legally conforming to dimensional requirements for its present use. The change of use of this, of such, such structure to any other use allowed by special permit by variance or by right without exterior changes to the structure shall not require compliance with the dimensional requirements of Section three point two. Additionally, an exterior change of such a structure in connection with such change of use that reduces the non-conformity of the existing structure without expanding the footprint, therefore, or reduces the footprint of the existing structure, shall be allowed. For any other exterior change of such a structure in connection with such change of use, the otherwise applicable dimensional requirements of Section three point two shall apply only to the areas being changed, but not to the entire structure. Nothing in this Section three point one point nine shall serve as an exemption to any other requirements of the ordinance, including, but, but not limited to the parking requirements of Section four point one and the use tables at Section two point three. So, we'll open the public meeting. We do have councillor Worthley here. This is his order from the city council that was referred to us and to P and D. And if you're ready, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chairman Noonan.
Public hearing, I'm sorry.
And thank you to members of the board. I appreciate that you recognize me being here. I just want to show my gratitude. I feel humbled to be among the greatest minds in the city, the brightest minds in the city on these planning sorts of things.
So, Jeff, if you don't mind, name and address for the record.
Sure, my name is Jeff Worthley. I live at Four Hawthorne Road in Gloucester, Massachusetts, and I'm an at-large city councillor. I'm before you tonight because our zoning code calls for a recommendation from the planning board whenever the city council is considering a zoning change. I put a zoning change forward to the council. We've referred it to the planning board and we're asking if you're a recommendation so that the planning and development committee can move forward and consider and have a public hearing on this zoning change. This is a zoning change I contemplated in my first tour of duty probably about twenty years ago when I was on the council and I ran out of time. I wanted to submit it because it didn't make sense that if someone is changing a use of their property, but not changing the footprint of their property, that they need to get additional requirements met for relief. So, for example, if you have a property that's within the side yard setback and it was built before the zoning code was in place in nineteen sixty-nine, they have a non-conforming use. They're not changing the dimensions of the property, but they're changing the use. The neighborhood would still have the right or neighbors or butters to object or have input on it. But right now, we give them the right to also object to something that's not changing. This came back to my attention recently, within the last year. There's a project that came before, I think, the planning board and then the city council on Addison Street. The property is going from a five family with an office space to a six family. It triggered the change of use requirements, including parking and those sorts of things, but the building was not changing at all. And we had people who came to the hearing protesting that the building is too high and then it's too close to the setback, it's too close to the sidewalk. And after listening to some debate about those things, I asked the attorney. I said, "How much closer to the sidewalk is your building going to be?" He said, "No closer, not at all closer." "How much higher is the building going to be?" He said, "It's not changing, we're not changing the exterior structure." So, what happens is we end up almost rubber stamping the things that do not change. It impacts all the boards and commissions and the council while they're just rubber stamping everything when that is not a change that matters. It gives the neighbors an opportunity to fight something that they can't actually change either. And then it gives something that someone could appeal. And all of these things don't actually advance the cause of public input on the change of use only, which is what people were coming before these boards for. So, this doesn't take away people's rights to contest or learn about a change of use. If some, if my neighbor wants to add a business and they're going to have a bakery, my neighbors are going to say, "Wait a minute, there's going to be traffic, there's parking." Those things would still be debated, but they can't say, "But your neighbor's building is too high if it's not changing at all." Right? Why would that be something that we'd be adding into the public sphere for input and potential litigation? So, my hope is that this body would make a recommendation to the council to approve this, but I'm also happy to hear any suggestions, feedback, amendments, those sorts of things to make it even better. Thank you.
The councillor Worthley. Greg, you want to take a initial stab?
I, I guess, you know, not having any legislative intent and just receiving the language, you know, it becomes a game of playing it out and trying to figure out. And wow, I'm going to have to take the glasses off because I can't see you if I have them on. So, I guess, I guess there's a little bit of a concern of making sure that we really understand what this applies to because it basically is any structure in which case it does seem like it applies, or at least it's, it's, impetus was a residential project and maybe limited in scope, no exterior change. But it seems like it would apply to any structure. So, this could also have applications for commercial property, maybe commercial property, you know, adjacent to residential district or in a, in a mixed-use district. And just kind of thinking about how those setbacks get applied as there's a change of use. Also, just wanting to make sure, and this is something I've, you know, I've had a brief discussion with Suzanne Egan, just to make sure that there's no inconsistencies that's, that this creates with other areas of the zoning ordinance. And one of the ones that kind of came to mind, which I think we've had a discussion about in the, in the past, is as it relates to two-family, for instance, as, as you change use. And the way that this reads, it sounds like it is not addressing, if you were to have an addition, it only applies to the, the setbacks that would be applied to the proposed use. So, is there an instance where, you know, someone could propose a structure under one set of standards right now and then later come in for a proposal that would basically negate those setbacks that were put in place for a particular reason? So, it's, it's not really a criticism of the idea. I think, you know, this is something that in our permitting process, you know, folks often have to go to the zoning board first before they end up with a lot of permitting that's typically handled by the city council. And, you know, sometimes the, the applicant or the public is kind of stuck between the two. The zoning board issues a decision, city council might say, "Well, what was the basis for that?" And have some maybe concern about what was granted. And when folks are at the zoning board, the zoning board is often saying, "Well, actually, we're not issuing the permit on the use." So, they're, they're kind of stuck and trying to understand the merits of the different applications and what the two jurisdictions are doing. But I think I just need a little time to kind of really play it out and understand that there aren't any unintended consequences.
Sure. You kind of asked a question in there, and I don't want to presume that, but if I-
I think I was just, stream of consciousness.
I just want to add that if you're not changing the structure, you're not moving closer, you're not, you're not going higher, then you're not needing a permit for something you're not changing. Right? So, in the example, if you're going from a one to two family in a, in a district that doesn't allow that by right, if you're not going higher, you don't need a height exception. But if your building's already forty-one feet, you've got to get a height exception for something you're not changing. And that triggers advertising, it triggers, my neighbors are saying, "You're blocking my view if you go up." And you're saying, "Well, I'm not going up." I think the library had to get a special council permit on a height exception and they're coming down eighteen inches from the old building. Why would we have a hearing on property getting less non-conforming? Right? And so, and I appreciate that you want to look at any potential unintended consequences, as always, but we're not talking about a change of the structure. If you're changing the structure, if you're getting more non-conforming, if you're moving your property line, your building close to the property line, you need the side yard setback. But if you have a property that's nine feet from the side yard setback right now, from the property line, and it's been that way since you built the house in nineteen twenty and you're changing the use because you're going to have a business use and you're going to have a tutoring, you know, something where the neighbors say, "Yeah, we have no problem with, you know, chiropract," whatever it is, a low-demand sort of change of use. They can't also say, "But I don't like that your, your building is only nine feet from my house." Well, it's been that way in that example for a hundred years. Right? So, we wouldn't ask them to have to meet a standard on something that's not changing. That's what I'm trying to get to. I hope that explains a little better.
I'm just curious, had you thought about commercial or industrial at all?
Yeah, if we're not changing the structure, I'm not sure what you're referring to, though. In terms of other, you used to talk about how it might change other requirements.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just thinking about the example of an existing non-conforming structure and going from an as-of-right use to an as-of-right use. And in some cases, maybe those setbacks may be important for something that was fairly benign, but maybe something that's a little bit more, you know, potentially has more of a potential impact, particularly like on the border with a residential use.
Yeah, I think if you're changing the use, that triggers a different sort of thing. I use the example, if you had a bakery, you might need parking, right? And that would be part of the change of use discussion, but not necessarily the height. Right? If I open a bakery and I'm forty-one feet high and I'm not changing the height, I shouldn't have to ask for a height exception if I'm not changing the height.
Yeah, and I think, I think that's, that's one specific dimension that I would tend to agree that the structure is what it is. And, and we definitely have had that instance where, because we've had some discussion about height recently, that, you know, there are a number of structures that are far greater than our thirty-foot height limitation, limitation in residential districts, but yet, when there is a change of use, they have to reexamine that and there's nothing changing. So, it's really, it's, I'm thinking more in terms of setbacks, side yard setbacks, rear yard setbacks, and those potential, those potential things that we're, we're not really potentially seeing right now, thinking about.
So, I don't know how the board wants to handle this, but if you want to ask more questions or email questions, I can get back to you between now and your next meeting.
Yeah, first of all, hi councillor Worthley, thank you for-
Jane, thank you.
I have to admit, not going to lie, I found this proposed ordinance really confusing the way it is written. And it kind of is a lot to untangle. I didn't even go back to the use tables to see. I was, it was too confusing to see where it would, you know, cause a change in the use tables. So, I would like to request that we get a legal review by city council to help us understand this more specifically.
Yes, I-
Not city counsill, city counsell.
Right.
Suzanne Egan.
I consulted with a number of land use attorneys who appear before you regularly and they helped me review this. And this is, I guess that's one of the things we ask for, two people or three people for opinion, you get five answers. But this was vetted at least from the private sector. I need to get our city attorney to look at this and also confirm that it does what we're trying to do. I'm all about editing it down so it's a little easier, too. So, if you have suggestions once we get to that point, I'd be happy to entertain those.
I think I'll let the people who are paid to do it, do it first.
Right, so-
Sean, I'm sorry, Steve, but Sean, and then you.
Me first?
Sean first.
On, on one hand, I actually very much applaud that, that I think the, the route- On, on one hand, I actually very much applaud that, I think the root motivation for this in terms of correcting situations where our zoning ordinance gives a butters sort of a false sense of that they have some sway over whether it's the ZBA or city council in granting special permit. And I think to that end was why, now four years ago, the planning board put forward amendments that would have treated equally all two-family structures. You can create a new two-family structure by right in almost all of our districts. You can convert with interior changes by right in virtually all our districts. But if you're making any exterior changes, and not a footprint change, but if you're just adding a stairwell off the back or another egress, then that requires a special permit, which is subject to input from the neighbors. And again, as long as that dwelling is meeting all of the other requirements, it shouldn't be a situation where that homeowner is put through that process and is subject to appeal of a special permit. Similarly, the three-family by right proposal that we had for our five, if the applicant is meeting every single requirement set forth in our zoning amendment, there's no clear reason for the ZBA to deny that permit. Yet our zoning ordinance places the applicant in that precarious position of having go through that process. It puts our ZBA in the circumstance of the rubber stamp thing that you're talking about, and it puts the residents, the butters, in the position of saying, "The ZBA just didn't listen to us," when the real reason is that the permit was granted is because they meet all the requirements of the permit. So on one hand, I think streamlining our zoning ordinance to allow for these uses that should be just a by-right use if they, if they check all our boxes, I applaud that. But I think it's, it's better done in those circumstances, where two-family by right should be two-family by right, no matter how you get there, as long as you're within the setbacks. Three-family by right in our five should be three-family by right in our five, as long as you're meeting the setbacks and dimensional requirements laid out, spelled out in our zoning ordinance. So I think those would be two easy things we could revisit, and actually, if we can all agree on, but sooner or later, I think it'd be great to actually correct those mistakes in our current zoning ordinance. But my concern with this is that I think it opens up a, a larger set of possibilities that somebody can build, say, a single-family home or a two-family home by right on a lot, build out to maximum dimensions, design it with an intent to convert it to four-family down the road, get that single or two-family occupancy permit, six months later, pull a new permit to actually divide it into four, and again, as long as they have, you exclude parking, so as long as they have that additional parking for those two new units, they can go forward with no oversight. And I think most neighbors would, most butters would like to have some input over that. And again, I'm not an attorney, but my read in this is that they wouldn't get that opportunity, that a developer could actually build that single or two-family home with the intent, ultimate intent of skirting the special permit review process by the city council.
If I may address that, if that's okay?
Yep.
So I appreciate how you see that, but it's the opposite of that. So if someone builds a single-family home with the hidden intent of converting to a four-family, that would be triggering a change of use, because I think three-family becomes a multifamily, right? So then they have to go through the process on the change of use, and that would be the chance for the neighborhood to say, "There's no parking, there's no," whatever it is that they want to raise. And I think, you know, I've also defended the rights of neighbors to have input, but what they wouldn't be able to do is, if the building were pre-existing, non-conforming, 45-foot-high building, and we're changing the use from a single-family to a four-family, they have a right to contest the conversion if they want to, but they don't have the right, and if this passes, to convert, to contest the building being 41 feet high.
Right, but what I'm suggesting is that somebody could build a 30-foot house to maximum lot coverage, 35 feet, or 35%, I think it is, in a lot of our districts, meet the setbacks, but for a single or two-family home, our zoning ordinance, when you bump up to multifamily four and five and above, you're, you are required to have additional open space, which is a dimensional requirement, which under this would not be triggered, even though it's, you're increasing from a two-family to a four-family, and you're meeting the off-street parking requirements, you are basically grandfathered in under, again, that's my read of it, grandfathered in with this ordinance, and are allowed to maintain those lesser open space or dwelling figures, et cetera.
I think this is a perfect example of how it is actually confusing, because I can see exactly what you're saying, Sean, and I, and I understand also, Councilor Worthing, what you're saying. So let's get a legal review.
And I think, again, to my point, my ultimate point is that I think, well, I appreciate what you're trying to do here. I think the better play would be to address the multiple problems in our zoning where this could follow through, but each of those zoning ordinances would be limited to this specific example, two-family, three-family, et cetera.
I agree. It will be quite an undertaking to go through the entire zoning ordinance, so make it actually be as crystal clear as we'd like it to be.
Done that already, but-
Yeah.
Thank you. Steve, did you have a question?
Yes. One, I thought of one case that might not be something someone considered before, which is, we're talking about a change to a commercial use or industrial use. Now, assuming that all other regulations have already been accommodated in doing this, we're only talking about the dimensional requirements. And let's say that, this is the hypothetical case, let's say that the owner had gotten a variance, including approval from neighbors, for the residential use, and now it's going to become, let's say, a bakery or a workshop where there's fan noise or other noise, or a paint shop where there's fumes, where the dimension, the reduced dimension, which was fine for seeing in someone's window, is not so great for extra noise or fumes. So that's, that's one case I thought of. And the other kind of structural thing about the document, I found, maybe I'm a visual thinker, I felt like I needed a flow chart, say, "If you're in this case, and then yes, and no, go here." And that led me to one, this is, and now getting just a little bit technical about use verbiage. In the first part, where you itemized the sections A, B, and C, for, you know, legally existing, let's say this is B, legally existing pursuant to valid variance and special permits, and then C, which is the one I question, it says legally conforming to the dimensional regulations for its present use. So that seems, that C case seems extraneous, superfluous, because, in fact, it's kind of redundant, because for all of the other clauses in the language that follows, if it's already conforming and never was a variant of any kind, then these other clauses of reducing the amount of variance and so on just don't apply. So that's a minor point, I think you could just strike that part.
Appreciate that.
I'd rather stay at the 30,000 foot. Many know that I'm a professional planner, although I practiced in Oregon and Washington and not Massachusetts, so I am not an expert on Massachusetts land use law. But I have helped to write a lot of land use ordinances, and this piece kind of dropping in, I have a hard time understanding it, and I think it's, it would take a lot of unraveling for us to be able to support it so that we knew it, but, so that we understood what its implications were. But I charge us collectively to do four things. First of all, we really have to have, understand what the issue is here. Secondly, we have to look at the range of issues to which it applies. We have non-conforming buildings, we have non-conforming uses, we have underlying zoning that allows a range of uses by right as opposed to conditional uses or ones that need special permits. So we have to understand not just why we're here, but a range of condition, a range of situations to which this would apply. Third question is, does this particular take on the problem respond to those circumstances? And if we do that, how does it ripple through in a potentially negative way affecting other code provisions that would create more problems than the piece would, than the new ordinance portion would address? And frankly, I, I mean, we certainly can have a review by our city council, I mean, city attorney about this, so we don't confuse it with council. But I think as a planning board, we really have to give this more thought than, than just looking at it and saying, "Oh gee, I think it has some merit." I can't tell you that I think it does, because I don't know. Now, in the past, when we have been, because one of the things we're charged to do is to look at modifications of the zoning code, and we have appointed a subcommittee that works through this to present to the planning board as a whole, and frankly, if there really is a problem here that can be addressed by this, I think it needs to be undertaken in a, in a more comprehensible and thoughtful manner. So I'm just trying to, I'm trying to put the big picture on it, rather than get into the weeds of specifics of the language.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, Beverly. Maybe laying this under the table?
I would like to remind my colleagues on the planning board that a couple of zoning ordinances, I can't give you the specifics, have come before us recently while we're in the middle of the comp plan review process, and our comprehensive view, comprehensive, what is it called? Comprehensive Plan Initiative is going to be finished soon, and it would be consistent with our previous decisions if we made sure that any recommendations coming out of that plan, you know, that we understood those recommendations, and that we made sure that anything we were doing with regard to zoning was consistent with those recommendations. That's just another thought, another consideration.
I guess the only comment that I'd like to make at this time is that the word "use", right? If it's a single-family and you go to two-family, it used to be a single-family, now the new use is a two-family. You go to a three-family, the new use is a three-family. People are still sleeping in beds and cooking in the kitchen, but the use, you know, the capacity of that building doesn't necessarily change, but the people going in and out of the building have, the cars going in and out of the building have. 20-something years ago, I took over a bank in East Gloucester, and it had a drive-through window, and it had a parking lot, and it had parking fields, and I wanted to start a bakery, and I was told that I have to get a change of use. I said, "Well, using the window to, I'm not going to give people money, I'm going to give them a coffee." "Oh, no, no, you've got to go through this whole thing." So the use is where I'm going to, will spend my energy, because, you know, if you go to two to three, it's still, people are still sleeping there, but it's more people, right? And that has a different impact, right? So I'll leave it at that.
And I appreciate it. Can I just say that if there were a change of use requirement, nothing changes in the process? It's that if your bakery were 41 feet high, and you had to go through a change of use, you still go through the same process, but you don't need to get a height exception any longer.
We're not talking about height exception, we're talking about use.
Well, I'm talking about structures and dimension, that's what this is about, is when you're changing the use, you don't need to get these other dimensional relief requests accomplished, because you're not changing the height or the dimensions. That's the point of this. So I'm sorry you went through that, by the way.
Oh, I mean, we survived, right? But the point is, is that there is, and we're in an EB, right, and the property actually was own-residential, so we had to change that as well. So I think we've said enough this evening. We are in a public hearing setting, so if anybody would like to speak in favor of this proposed zoning amendment, you can come forward and speak your name and address for the record.
Deborah Ellison, Ellison Law Office, 63 Middle Street, Gloucester. I agree with the concept of this. I've had many situations where my clients have gone in with existing buildings, changing the use, and requiring, you know, four, five, six variances. I think the difficulty is sort of playing this out, as the planner said. I think you have to do that in order to make sure there aren't any unintended consequences. One of the things that comes to my mind is, if you're changing from a use to another use that has different setback requirements because of the intensity, that might be a different situation. So while I support it in concept, I think it probably needs some more thought.
Thank you, Attorney Ellison. Any bells still in the room?
Yep. Chris McCarthy, 166 Bray Street in Gloucester. I'm not necessarily for or against it, I mean, I like, I like more housing, but I think when you have big changes in the zoning by law, I think it should benefit the most people that you can do it, and I think what Jason had talked about, going back to dealing with one and two families, allowing families to expand, grow old in place, I think that's something that we, that should be up here. And I think, first of all, changes should be easy for the layperson to understand. I can understand most things. You write these things and you can understand them a lot, but the layperson, they look at what was written here, and I think they'll run from it. I think it's, it's, it looks like it was written by attorney, for attorneys who drink a lot of coffee. I don't, I think it's, it's a, it's, I think it certainly could be shortened very much and just deal with the setbacks and the requirements for lot size. It's called a change of use without exterior changes, but in it, it talks about changing the, in three places, changing the exterior and what you have to do to do that. And I think it's, it definitely needs a lot of work, and I would hope that if it does come back, comes back with the one and two family, and it's a lot crisper, and it's easier to read for laypeople, and it's easier to understand, and it helps some of the landlords that need, that need this sort of, sort of relief where they have an existing large structure. One of the specifics, the first, first couple of lines, and I'm not a lawyer, although I pretend, it's section 3.1.9, shall apply to structures that are, A, pre-existing, non-conforming structure, it doesn't say legally, so it could be any structure that someone had nine units where they really should only have five, and if this were approved, that if it's pre-existing, non-conforming, then they should be allowed to keep it. I think that that's, that's got to be looked at. But I think it's, I think any, any time again, you can, you can make more housing, I think it's good, but I think this needs a lot of work, and I think it definitely could be cut by about 75% and just deal with setback requirements and land size requirements. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Thank you. So we are in a public comment period during this public hearing. If there's anybody in the attendees list, we've got nine that would like to add comments at this early stage, please raise your hand electronically, you'll be permitted to speak. I'd ask that you state your name and address for the record and keep your comments to three minutes. Okay, hearing none. So next steps? Oh yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Councilor Worthing, I do understand the ordinance better now, that you have given those examples and made those explanations, so I really do appreciate that. But I think we're hearing from, from the public, and you're hearing from the board- But I think we're hearing from, from the public and you're hearing from the board that this might not be ready for primetime, so I would just suggest that there is one other option, which is that you withdraw it and come back when the comp plan is done and, you know, with a more streamlined proposal.
Thank you, I appreciate that. This had been edited down from what the first version looked like, and imagine the confusion if there was a double the number of words. And I'm not going to put that blame on any attorneys in town that you might know that might be loquacious, but I did have some help and I needed, probably needed an editor more than anything else. I appreciate the comp plan and how that can be sort of overriding, let's make sure everything we're doing is in line with that, assuming that it's done in short term and gets approved and accepted by the council. This, though, I don't think changes anything I've been hearing from the comp plan in terms of character of neighborhoods or qualities in the city as much as it's just the machinations of how does the zoning code work. And so as much as I appreciate the suggestion of withdrawal, I would prefer if maybe the committee either refers it to your committee that deals with zoning changes or continues it, and we can get the legal opinion, and maybe I can get some, maybe amended, make it a little clearer between now and the next time we, you have a meeting, and then you can decide then if it makes sense to send it to the council or continue further if, if the board so deems. Is that fair? Thank you.
Hearing, sorry, I'm hearing a continuance in our future and, and probably a referral to a subcommittee to contemplate.
Still rather have Suzanne review it before we volunteers spend a lot of time on it.
Fair enough. And so if we were going to continue, do we want to give two cycles on the planning board and give her ample time to, to review?
I mean, one potential other suggestion, depending on how people feel, that essentially since everything in this is, is basically taking stuff off of the ZBA's plate to perhaps refer it to ZBA and see how comfortable they are with having those things taken off their plate.
Good point.
Or how often they have them on their plate.
Yeah. So continuance?
Yeah, continuance, but I'm not sure how long or what we want to try to achieve in between.
I mean, we do have a.
While you're doing it, can I make one more comment? I think that's the whole point. This kind of, your suggestion with the ZBA, how big a problem is this? How big a problem is this? And what are some of the examples that can be shown so that we, we see a need for this before we start trying to solve a problem? We should really have a better identification of the problem.
We could vote, up or down. But giving it the consideration that we should. So sounds like a continuance, but how many cycles? I mean, we do have a, we have enough clock that we have to concern ourselves with.
Not really. I mean, you've, you've opened the hearing, I think this is on the council agenda, probably to be opened and continued, and then it's just when it comes to a conclusion, its disposition. So the time for, I mean, if you wanted to try to set a subcommittee meeting between now and some period of time, also, if you're instructing me to send a memorandum to the zoning board for their consideration as well, those things take some time, so, you know, probably a couple of cycles.
Yeah, I don't want to set a date for a subcommittee meeting until Suzanne, at least, has had a chance to review it, and ZBA is a great idea. Yep.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
May, first, I would love to have the zoning board's approval or input formally, but I would never put this forward without having already consulted with a number of them. They've seen this, and they, I'm not going to speak for them, let them speak for themselves, but they're thrilled because, as Ms. Bookin said, you know, how many times has happened? It is, the bulk of their agenda is approval of things that aren't actually changing, and they get, they get beat up from the public about, they're just a rubber stamp on a height exception that's not changing or setback. So this has been in concert with, in, with communication with the zoning board. And I certainly, since Suzanne Egan also works for the council, I'd be happy to put the request in and take that off of Mr. Katamatory's plate as another thing to do. I can just forward it to her in a couple of minutes, and it'd be for her to review and come back to this board maybe in a month or two with that input. So it's not an ask of the planning board, but from the council.
No offense, but I actually think it's a good idea for Greg Katamatory to do that so he can express the planning board's concerns and opinions.
None taken. Thank you.
Okay, so let's wrap this up. So today is March 20th, we have a meeting April 3rd, and then April 17th or May 1st.
May might not make the April 17th meeting, but I don't know yet.
Okay, so we say May 1st.
That sounds good.
So I'll accept a motion to, thank you.
I move that we continue the public hearing for the proposed amendment to the Gloucester zoning ordinance chambers. By, by the proposed amendment to the Gloucester zoning ordinance of section three dimensional requirements to our next scheduled meeting of May 1st, 2025. Second.
We have a motion by Jane Ramsen, seconded by Beverly Bookin, all in favor? I opposed, hearing none. Thank you for your time. And next, under the agenda for public hearings this evening, in accordance with the provisions of Master General Law 40A, Section 5, and the Gloucester zoning ordinance, Section 1.11, the planning board shall consider the following proposed zoning amendment. Amend the Gloucester zoning ordinance by adding a new section 5.21, demolition delay, with the purpose of preserving historically significant structures by determining the historic significance of the structure and structures, and if structures are preferably, preferably preserved by the historical commission and delaying demolition as a part of a demolition permitting process of the building commissioner. Do we have any representatives this evening?
May I address this first, since I put this forward?
Yep.
Thank you again. So.
Just got to do that name and address thing again.
Sure, Jeff Worthley, 4 Hawthorne Road, Gloucester, Mass. I'm on the city council, and I submitted this zoning change to the council, and it's before the Planning Development Committee, pending a review and recommendation from the planning board, just like the last one. Although this is a very different ordinance than the last. I'm joined tonight by members of the Historical Commission, who have been working hard on this for a number of years, and I think that they're pretty happy to be in this position to have this conversation, and I'm going to defer to them momentarily. I just want to set the table for a second, though. I was very involved in the Plan 2000 effort. I was the scribe for 52 meetings, so I got a chance to learn a lot, and it was late, great Janice Saludo, which many of you knew, who taught me a lot of these things. And one of the phrases in Plan 2000 is preserving the sense of place. And I remember looking at her and saying, what does that even mean? And how do we do that, right? And she talked about the feeling that we get, not just from being in a city that has historic structures, but that someone cared enough to pass these on to our generation, next generation. And I said, well, what do we do with that? How do we do that? She talked about the Ellery House, which many of you may know was once at the Rotary, and then when 128 was coming here, it was decided to move the Ellery House to its current location. It's preserved, it is now the home of the Cape Town Historical Museum. And when you think about it, there is a feeling of like, this was worth preserving, and I'm glad that someone did that. And Janice said, the problem is, the people that did that aren't around any longer. And that mindset of taking care of something that's important, it may not be there, whether it be a developer, or city council, or a planning board. And so that message was loud and clear to me, and I've never figured exactly how until the Historical Commission's been working on the potential for a demo delay ordinance. I put this forward for your consideration. It has been pretty well thought out, but I am certainly open to other considerations and amendments to it. And I'd like to defer currently, if it's okay with the chair, to members of the Historical Commission. I believe they have a PowerPoint presentation to go along with their verbal presentation as well. Is that fair? Thank you very much, Chairman.
Before I introduce myself and give you my address, can I get permission to share my screen?
So are you logged in as an attendee right now?
Yes.
Okay, see if I can find you. Logged in under, if you can raise your hand.
Susan's name, I would think.
It's under Susan?
Oh, raise my hand in the.
Electronically, yeah.
Oh, okay, sorry. And I'm an IT guy, too. I may need your help, Susan. This is your computer, and it doesn't seem to be.
Be in the bottom of the, middle of your Zoom screen.
Ah. There we go.
Local admin. That's actually a $10 penalty, you know, so.
Okay.
Cloaking device.
So I join as a panelist?
You'll, you'll be, you'll be moved over shortly. Make sure that your laptop is muted.
Yeah, it's muted. Okay. Oops, no. Yep. Just getting it up, and it's not there. It's not responding, let me try one more thing. Share, there we go. There we go, okay. Apologize for that. Ralph Pizzatoro, I'm chair of the Historical Commission. I am at 17 Andrews Street. I'm here tonight with Susan Riley and Susan Wright, and I will need to put the presentation in presentation mode. There we go.
And Ralph, if I could ask you to speak more directly into the mic, that would.
Sure, yes, I tend to speak softly, so I'll.
Got to use your outdoor voice.
Okay, well, okay. Thank you for letting us be here tonight. It's a pleasure to be able to present this, and we, as Jeff said, we've been working on this. I've been in the commission, Historical Commission, for about five years, and it was one of the first things that I worked on, and we've been picking it up and putting it down for five years now, and I think it's finally ready for primetime. So our mission, this is a mission, to preserve and protect Gloucester's historical assets and develop public awareness and appreciation of Gloucester's historic resources. We actually work under the State Historical Commission, and we feel that this demo delay is a real ordinance that will support this, this mission. Just a little bit about who we are before we get into the specifics. We're members of the commission, as I said, the six of us, maximum of seven. Voting members, we have a very active agenda. We've identified 17 projects that we're going to put in our three-year plan, or if we have put in our three-year plan. Thirteen of these projects are in progress now, and one of them being demo delay. This is a very high-level overview of the demo delay. We're going to get into details further on in the, in the presentation, but just as a way to set the groundwork. And I believe you all have received this presentation, so you've probably looked through it. But it's really based on, on structures that are 100 years plus, and it only affects about three and a half, say, three to four houses per year. And that number is based on an analysis that Susan had done, and she's going to talk to that in a minute. And it's not on this slide, but just to set the groundwork, we, we specifically excluded outbuildings, garages and so forth, as well as modifications to the home, like siding or windows, or a new porch, or things of that nature. Just because we wanted to strike the balance between this being felt as a burden versus protecting our gems. This, this ordinance, as, as we've written it, is really to protect, to protect the gems of the city, not to protect every old structure that clearly may need to be torn down. Hopefully that'll become apparent as we go through this. We'll have a review upfront, the Gloucester Historical Commission will review, review the demolition request. We will come to a decision on whether we should move forward through the process or not within one month or less. We're proposing a delay period of 12 months, and as, as you'll see in Susan's work, that it may be zero, it may be three, it may be four houses that only qualify a year, that qualify a year for a demo delay. It's, again, we've written this so it's not a burden, so it doesn't, it doesn't impact a lot of homes, a lot of structures, but it impacts the ones that, as I said, we feel are really historically significant and really are a part of the, the nature of Gloucester. And the delay is a pause. Demolition may still occur after the delay period, so we're not, we are in no way think that we're going to make a permanent decision here that the building will never go away. It is possible that it will. And Susan's going to go through the numbers and a few other things.
Thank you, Ralph. Thank you to the planning board for this opportunity, and to Jeff for getting us here. I'm Susan Morial, I live at 7 Radcliffe Street in Rocky Neck. That's what I do, all T5. Yeah, it's not going to do it here, is it? We're trying to get the mouse to the slide. So to understand what's at stake, we first need to know what Gloucester's historic assets Which one? Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. So Gloucester has nearly 12,000 housing structures, you probably all know that very well. What you might not know is that over 5,000 of them are 100 years old or older. We have about 600 structures that date between the 1600s and the 1800s, the most valuable and probably the most vulnerable. We have a remarkable 15 buildings from the 1600s, 17, 121 from the 1700s, and nearly We have a remarkable 15 buildings from the 1600s, 17, 121 from the 1700s, and nearly 500 from the 1800s. Sorry, folks.
Okay, you know what, Susan, I think you're not in slideshow mode and also if you go to slideshow and click on presenter view in the slideshow tab. Yep, right there. And then, under monitor, maybe do it automatically or something like that, and under, above, use presenter view on the right. If you change, if you click on that carrot where it says primary monitor. Might switch to automatic.
You know what? Sure. Otherwise, I'm just going to wing it.
Usually you can look out there.
Okay, I will wing it. Yeah. All right, so so, well-established, we have an extraordinary amount of older houses in this town, over 614 that were built from 1899 to 1645. These are the ones that we at this Historic Commission are particularly concerned with and the ones that we hope will be the focus of a demolition delay. Now, the other, well, Gloucester has a lot of historic listings and designations. We have four registered districts, we have 34 National Register Historic Places. We have two landmarks, including one that's the Schooner Adventure. We have about 2,000 listings in the state database and we have 10 preservation restrictions. The issue with all of these wonderful designations is it doesn't protect any of these wonderful historic assets. For example, the oldest home in Gloucester is at 179 Washington Street. It was built in 1645, it's a first-period house. It's the first house past the entry of the Oak Grove Cemetery, we've passed it many times. And yet, for all of its designations, this house has no protections. The homeowner can raise it, a contractor can come in and alter it in any way he wants. And as you can tell, it has been so altered that it really is unrecognizable as a historic house. The only places that are protected in Gloucester are the 84 that are in the local historic district downtown and that is overseen by the District Commission. And then there are 10 preservation restrictions on properties that people have written into their deeds, this building is one of them. Per year, on average, Gloucester takes down 117 houses. This is an analysis done in the last eight years and as Ralph referred to before, it doesn't include sheds or garages or partial tear downs. These are whole houses or two-family houses. Twenty-eight of these were 100 years old or more, and this is just in the last eight years. So we average 3.5 tear downs of old houses, 100 years or more, every year. So you think about that in a decade, that's 35 houses. So this is really our focus. Ralph's going to talk to you about the ordinance itself.
Thanks, Susan, is it working now? So the purpose of the ordinance is it postpones a demolition, as the name says, of a historically significant, preferably preferred, preferably preserved property for a specific period to determine if and how its destruction might be avoided in the public interest. It does not prevent demolition, as I said before. It is, the property owner has a right to tear it down if they want to, it just delays it. The process begins with somebody, contractor, more than likely, going and requesting a permit to tear down the structure. Again, 100 years old or older. In addition to that, there's also criteria. The building department will come to us, say, this house is over 100 years. Is it historically significant or not? To determine whether it's historically significant or not, there's a set of criteria that is pretty much used statewide that we use to investigate the particular structure that's coming down, to see if it is historically significant or not. This is a build of the process in more detail. So as I said, the building department receives an application for demolition. Within five days, they notify the Gloucester Historical Commission. Then, based on that criteria I was just talking about, we decide whether it is or is not historically significant. If it's not, the process ends. If it is, it goes to the next phase. We gather input from the owners, contractors, neighbors, and the public to get their thoughts on whether we should go into a demo delay period with this structure. Based on that input, we determine if the building is preferably, is not or is preferably preserved. If it's not, again, the process ends. If it is, the delay period begins. And the delay period is a 12-month period, start to finish. That's just a little more on the delay period. And as Susan said, this is only going to affect zero to possibly three, possibly four houses a year, just based on the criteria and the age of the structure. We fully recognize that there's a lot of older structures that are not worth preserving and we certainly don't want to get involved in those. Criteria. Architectural importance, is it associated with an important person, industry, or event? Is it representative of a particular architectural, cultural, or economic, or political, or social history of the city? Is it listed in a state or National Register of Historic Places? Is it recognized as a state or national historic landmark? Is it in the presence of a designated Massachusetts Cultural District? Which I believe Rocky Neck is, as an example. Or is it within 150 feet of a local historic district boundary line? So those are the criteria, it doesn't have to adhere to all of them, but it may adhere to more than one. During this delay period, we would work with the homeowner, we'd work with the contractor to see if there's a compromise. Can we partially delay, for instance, can we leave a facade? If that makes sense. Can the development plan be modified in any way? Can the property be rehabilitated instead of torn down? Can the property be relocated and so forth? An example of a successful collaboration is the Aquarius Project, which is over on Atlantic Avenue. The picture's below is the original house of 1907. And working with the Gloucester Historical Commission, the builder rebuilt the house essentially and restored it in its, not necessarily its original fashion, but certainly a great example of a historically preserved house that's now good for modern use. On the other hand, that same Aquarius project, there was this property. It was deemed too old, too rundown, I shouldn't say too old, too rundown and disrepair, and it was torn down. But at a minimum, we each, we at least get in and are able to document what the house is documented, take pictures, and put the information in archives for future use, which is very helpful. Another example, this is an example of how a historic designation can save the homeowner a lot of money. The home on the left, before 2000, is a home that's in Rocky Neck. The one on the right is the restored version. But they were going to be able to, or they were going to be made to put this house on pilings because it's right near the water. Because it was historically deemed historically significant, it was kept as is and they didn't have to comply to that ordinance. Forty-six percent of the states have an ordinance of various times, mostly in eastern Massachusetts. If you look at the area around us, the North Shore, and see that almost all communities have some type of ordinance in place, demolition ordinance in place, with the exception of Rockport, Gloucester, and Manchester, all the other towns do. And this is our, I guess, our request of you folks to advocate for us for adding a demolition delay ordinance to the city charter. And this house that's pictured here is an example of something that was lost. This is the so-called Solomon's Temple Building on Middle Street. It was torn down in the 60s. The Y, I believe, was put in, the YMCA. And since then, the YMCA has been torn down and rebuilt. It could have been a lovely addition to Middle Street, but it, there was no protections at the time and it was torn down. And I think the rest of the slides are just backup. Excuse me. Okay, so next slide's okay. So just a review of the membership of the Gloucester Historical Commission. Again, me, Ralph Pizzatoro, Robert Whitmarsh is the vice chair, Holly Hardy, Susan Morale, Tim Quinn, Julie Travis, David Rheinlander, and Susan Wright. And we'd also like to thank Jeff Worley for bringing this forward to the City Council. I believe that's it, so if you have questions, please, please ask.
Thank you, Ralph.
Thank you for your presentation. This is where my planning experience in Portland, Oregon comes into be helpful. I am really blown away at exactly how large the repository of historic houses are here in Gloucester. But of course, since it was founded 401 years ago, that's not a surprise. Portland, Oregon was founded in 1845, obviously because it's a west coast city. And we have had historic demolition restrictions in our code for decades. Simply, and our housing stock of value is probably only from the late 19th century, early 20th century. And yet, this has been in place for as long as I can remember. It came, I think, out of the 1950s and 60s when urban renewal came into our older neighborhoods. Wonderful old immigrant neighborhoods with some very interesting historic houses and buildings and just demolished it because urban renewal was what we did in the 1950s and 60s. And some wonderful facilities were built under urban renewal, but it was at the expense of the housing fabric or the historic fabric. And so the whole purpose of the demolition restrictions or the wait period is just to give the owner a chance to reconsider how the property, what the disposition of the property is. It gives them a chance to have, be lobbied about ways that the building can be renovated and repurposed. It allows a buyer to make an offer who is willing to salvage the building. Ultimately, the owner has the right unless it's a highly restricted building in a historic district. But we also have in Portland historic conservation areas that are less valuable. They're not under federal protection and state protection, but they're under, local have been identified as having reasonable historic value and this applies to those as well. And the other feature that's rather interesting is that when you do demolish the building, there's a whole industry to salvage the historic pieces of that building, whether it's cornices or original flooring or windows. And there are actually repositories of these materials that come from the house and people who are interested in, who are renovating their own properties can go and get these historic pieces to incorporate into their buildings. And so I really think that this is, for a community of this size with a housing repository of this history, that to not have something like this in place actually quite surprises me that we're only doing it now because it's a very, very valuable tool to preserve our historic fabric.
Thank you, Beverly.
I am also generally in favor of a demolition delay. I know this is something that's been under consideration for a long time by the Historical Commission and other members of the community. I have some specific, as an ordinance, I have some specific comments, but I'm not sure right now is the time to do that. I do have a technical comment for Greg, which is, is this a zoning ordinance or does this belong in the regular ordinance?
Yeah.
Municipal code?
Yeah, so I think, you know, that, and I appreciate, we met with Ralph early on and wanted to just go over a couple of things about process, making sure that any determination of historical significance is made by the commission and, or sorry, the commission and not building inspector, I think there was some language that were of some concern. And also where we are in the process with this being initiated as a zoning amendment. And as I started to look at this, and I think this is something that may have occurred in the past because I think there was an attempt to promote demolition delay ordinance in the early 2000s. And I think perhaps consistent with what happened at that point, and I think as far as I can see from the guidance from the Massachusetts Historical Commission, is that it should be in a general code and not a zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance regulates uses by district as well as dimensions and doesn't typically get into an application that's just related to demolition delay. So that's, at least, everything I've seen, the communities that you've identified, they're all in their general code. I'm trying to remember the community that right now is actually in the process of repealing their ordinance that's in a zoning code and basically enacting the same in their general code just because the enabling legislation doesn't allow for a demolition delay to be in zoning. I did look into determinations of the Attorney General's Office, didn't find anything specifically, but I think if your charge is coming from the from the state Historical Commission and that's their guidance, then that's probably where it belongs. But otherwise, again, so we're kind of in a little bit of an odd spot because we noticed the public hearing for this. But if ultimately it needs to be under the Code of Ordinances, that would be the purview of the city council and the Ordinance Administration Committee.
So if that were the case, would it still come back to the planning board for a review and recommendation?
It would not.
So now's my chance. So since we're still in a planning board public hearing, I just have a couple of questions for you guys. One is, how do we know how old the building actually is? Because it's my understanding that a lot of the records in Gloucester were destroyed. And so, almost a large number of the properties that are older than 1920, just say 1920. I realize you said 100 years. That might be what you were trying to get at when you said 100 years, but I just, that could be an issue. Also, the historical significance criteria, are we being attacked? No. Seem more subjective than they should. I realize that the process is very subjective. But, and I understand the purpose, or at least the purpose should be to give the Historical Commission time to negotiate with the owner and, you know, set up alternatives if you can convince the owner to do that. In a lot of places, in the ordinance, you talk about a developer, but I think it's more appropriate to talk about an owner, you know, and to tighten up the criteria and create some kind of a system to sign a value because you say, determine to what extent it is historically significant, when really it's a binary choice. It either is historically significant or it's not historically significant. We don't want to think about it as a sliding scale of kind of, but not really, maybe it is a lot, but not enough, was one comment, or two comments. And I had some other very specific comments, but they're not really appropriate here. My only other concern was that the Historic District Commission doesn't have any staff resources or funding resources to help you with the expertise that's needed to make these kinds of determinations. And I don't, I don't know what's to be done about that, but it seems like kind of a big burden on you guys, you know, who are, you know, experts in the same way that I'm an expert in the planning board field, but I'm not paid to do it and I'm a volunteer and I learn on the spot. And so, you know, whether your expertise is, you know, able to figure all this stuff out.
We are very lucky to have, and Susan Wright is on it. We have a great archives group here. We have a person from the library, Julie Travis, who's not here tonight. But she is very helpful in researching these homes. We also have a various number of databases available. MACRIS, for instance, it's a state database of old houses. So, you know, it is subjective a little. I mean, we, you know, you have to, you have to dig through the details to really come to a conclusion. Sometimes it's easy, but I don't expect it's always going to be easy. And you're correct about the dates. Apparently, there was a fire at some point and a lot of the documentation was lost. And they just put a blanket date across all of the houses. It is going to be, and has been, kind of a burden, but we have to do the best we can with the information we have.
Like I said, I am in favor of this. It just probably needs to be tightened up and, yeah.
Ralph, before, just, could you stop sharing your screen so the public can kind of see us all?
Oh, sorry.
Rather than just looking at the list?
Sure.
David and then Steve.
Okay. Yes, I'm generally also in favor of this and thank you for the proposal, well thought out. I guess my basic question is, who benefits from this and who does it harm?
Yep.
And so, I have two questions, that. And the other one is, in the research that you did about other towns that already have this bylaw in place or ordinance in place, how has it affected the real estate market? Has it, is there with it? Has it had no effect on it at all? Has it been beneficial or negative? It would seem to me that the burden here is on the owner of the property, whether it's the current owner or the buyer of the property, right? Because they, there's a delay in time. Costs go up higher if they want to do things. So I'm curious about your thoughts on that.
Well, your question about other towns, I don't have that data. And as a matter of fact, I did reach out to the Historical Commission in Salem and also Newburyport, and I didn't get a response. So I don't have that data and how it's impacted. And we wanted to have that available to us, but we don't have it. As far as a burden, yeah, we'll deal with the burden first and then talk about the benefits. But yeah, I mean, the homeowner may have to wait if they wanted to, if they're dead set on tearing the house down. But we'd at least like to get a chance to convince them to go another route or, as I said, maybe a partial tear down or remove it or something along those natures, along that, along those lines. So, yeah, it may cost them time, but it also may save them money as in the case of that house in, in Squam, it was at Rocky Neck, where the house was going to have to be put up on pilings. And since it had a historical significant designation from us, they didn't have to go that route and didn't have to bear that expense of putting them up on blocks. So, yeah, I mean, it is, it is going to cost something to somebody. Again, we're talking about zero to four houses a year. So it's going to be pretty, pretty low impact if you look at the city as a whole. As far as benefits, the city as a whole benefits. Not just the aesthetics of it, but also the richness. I think Jeff was saying, the richness of living in a city like Gloucester that has its rich history. That's certainly a benefit to all citizens and all visitors to Gloucester. And speaking of visitors, it's also, it's also a draw for tourists. People come here for the history. If the history's gone, they may still come here for the beaches, but they're not going to come here as often and stay as long. They will go to the beach and go home. They won't go to the hotel and spend money. They won't go to the store and spend money. They won't go to the restaurant and spend money. They'll, they'll just go home if it's gone. And once it's gone, it's gone. So that was a little bit of emotional explanation, but hopefully that answers your question.
It does. I would just add, in my experience working in municipalities that have these demolition delay bylaws already in place, that the market, the real estate market, it's kind of built into the market already. And buyers, particularly if they're developers, tend to know this already if they're moving into a particular area. So it doesn't have a negative effect on value from my perspective.
Thank you. And I also applaud the idea and most of what I see here as well. Following Jane's example, I don't want to get into too much detail. There are just a couple of points that I thought might be worth mentioning. One is the requirement that the building commissioner make the first determination.
Yeah.
I think that also adds the onus on the building commissioner to understand those nuances that are properly in your area of expertise. But as it's worded, it says the building commissioner, I'll read the entire sentence. When an application for demolition of a building or structure is filed with the building commissioner, building commissioner determines if the building or structure meets any of the criteria listed in.
That's not the, I have to take a look at what you're reading, that that's not the intent at all. In fact, we had the same discussion when we met with Greg and the building commissioner was there. Alls we need out of the building commissioner is to say it's 100 years old or older.
That's what I would hope. And that's not what I'm seeing in the document.
Which document are you looking at?
So that's, that's kind of the point of this. Like, I can't change what you submitted. So they, they've seen what was referred from, from the city council.
Yeah.
So if there's amended language, then it needs to be kind of agreed upon in the process and proposed.
Yes, okay. Yes, we have amended the language since we met last. And if that's the version you're looking at, I understand why you're saying that.
All right.
We clarified that.
Thank you. Good, that sounds good. And then with that caveat, I'll mention just one other point that might be tricky. I'll read it, as, at the Historical Commission's next scheduled meeting for which public notice can be given, an initial determination is required to be made. Now, I understand that public notice can be given as little as two days before the meeting. So that might require you to make, in the worst case, a determination within two days.
Which, which is, I think it's doable if we have to do that. We're, we're here. We'll do the work.
I'm curious, in the drafting of this, did you rely on, look at other ordinances in other Massachusetts or Boston areas? I mean, there's so many colonial, cities of colonial age and under Massachusetts law, it seems to me, rather than reinvent the wheel, that if I were doing this, I'd look at several ordinances that are already in place, see the ones that might be a good fit, use that as a basis as opposed to doing it from scratch. So I'm, I'm curious how, what led up to the drafting of this specific version of the ordinance that you're presenting?
Well, first, the Massachusetts Historical Commission has a template. And we started with the template. We also looked at other towns around us and see what they had. And they're all very similar. But we adjusted ours a bit to make it a little bit more, I think, a little more clearer, hopefully it was, and to make it a little less burdensome. For instance, the sheds and garages and old buildings and so forth, we've taken out of scope.
For you?
Yes, I think that's the way to do it. And so, you've taken a template. You've looked what other communities have done and then you have tailored it to Gloucester. I mean, that's the ideal way to draft something like this. I mean, because you're not, this is not new. I mean, this is a concept that's just as late in coming to Gloucester.
No, we weren't the first ones to think of this.
Thank you, Beverly. Questions? Alex?
Well, I just want to note that Ralph and Susan came to represent the Gloucester Historical Commission during our comprehensive planning process. And this came up in our technical working sessions. And it is a draft recommendation in the comprehensive plan. And our engagement suggests that it's a supported one by the public and experts. So it's great to see the proposal made and sounds like there's some tweaks that need to happen and this is a good starting point. And so, I'm glad to see this move forward.
Thank you. I guess the question really becomes general code or is it before us as an ordinance?
So I think that one is, at least what I've seen is fairly clear. And I think it probably makes a lot of sense for it to be, that's where you're discussed in the Code of Ordinances and not the zoning ordinance. And the Historical Commission is an identified special permit granting authority and it's not a special permit. And it really deals, just deals with the structure rather than the use because it really doesn't matter how it's being used. You could have something that was built as a residential use and maybe is being used for something else at this point. So that certainly seems like it makes sense. My only other comments about process is a little bit kind of following on Steve's comment about making sure that you're building in enough time for you to conduct that initial review. It's probably, I'm sure that, you know, the homeowner, the development community is really probably more concerned about the delay period. But making sure that it's built in, that you're going to have enough time to make that initial determination. When you say notice, I also am curious if that is to be considered a public notice beyond just the notification of an agenda, which is the 48 hours. But if you're looking to try to have any outreach or anything like that, if it involves the paper, that's usually like a three week lead time for a notice. And also, let's make sure that we give our building commissioner enough time to process paperwork. I don't know what happens in the event that he doesn't forward something to you within five days. But his review period, I say his because we have a male building commissioner. He has a 30 day review period for demolition applications. So I would just want to make sure that those timelines are in sync. If they're mirroring what's happening in other communities, that's, then that's great. But I would just be a little bit concerned about that to make sure that you have enough lead time to process those applications.
Yeah. So the stage in the process where we get public opinion, and to answer your question, yes, we do want public opinion on it. We do want to, don't want it just to be on the agenda. We want to make sure we get, we get feedback because that's important. But that step in the process doesn't happen until after we make the initial designation as a historically significant structure. That designation happens upfront with just the commission itself. So we have another 30 days after that to announce to the public or whatever the mechanism is to get their opinion at our next scheduled meeting.
Oh, sure. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, Mr. Worley.
Regarding the process, and I appreciate first, all the input, Steve, just the fact that I thought there was an or and there's an and, that was really helpful, believe it or not. And I appreciate the general sense of support we're hearing. And Mr. Kama Tori, if it's going to go to the Code of Ordinances, I may be able to get an exception to get on the next council agenda simply to refer there. I think the deadline was today, but we have, this wasn't foreseeable. So that might be one of those scenarios where I could get that to the Ordinance Administration Committee. What I do wonder though is, because I appreciate, even with that uncertainty, that there's been some dialogue tonight that's been very helpful. And would the committee consider a very general motion of, motion letter of support for the concept? Obviously, understanding there's tweaks, there's real specificity that needs to be clarified. But something like that would be helpful to, you know, the city council also are laypeople, I'm one of them. And having the expertise of the planning board saying, though it's not before us appropriately, we appreciate the concept of preserving historic structures and would love to see the council continue the dialogue on demolition delay. Something like that would be helpful to our process to keep it moving forward.
We've tended not to do that in the past. And, and I guess politely, if it's not appropriately in front of us, then we've met your advertising, we've had a public hearing about it. But again, if you want to show public support or support from the planning board, you can watch our video and it's very clear. And I support the idea as well.
Thank you. It is appropriately before you in terms of, it's been advertised appropriately. And the question is whether it's a zoning code or ordinance. But it's before you legally and appropriately in that regard. But as far as you don't want to get involved in a recommendation on a Code of Ordinances, I respect that.
Correct.
Yeah. I think that the sentiment is clear. If anybody else wants to just at least share their opinion, that might be helpful for our process from the council's perspective.
So I just want to make a point in fairness. You will have disposition on this one way or another because procedurally it's in front of you and you have to make a decision at the end of the night or at the end of the close of the public hearing. But there are some members here of the public. So we should certainly afford the opportunity for folks to speak.
Okay, so we are in a public hearing setting. And if you are in favor of this proposal, you can come forward and state your name and address for the record. And you'll keep your comments to three minutes. Sir?
Hi there. Rich Carlson, Seven Rackliff. Seven Rackliff is actually known to some of you guys as the Old Rockaway Hotel. And one of the things that I'm really proud of is that Rockaway Hotel was not demolished. It was built in 1890. In 1980, there was a question as to whether it was going to hit the, hit the bricks and just be demolished. It wasn't. It was saved. It's still there today. In fact, part of it is floating out in the river. That, that boat, the houseboat that you see out there, that's part of the Old Rockaway Hotel. Gloucester has a really rich tradition of preserving its structures. And Beverly, what you said about, you know, we, in the 1950s, in the 1960s, we forgot about that. And I am just so pleased to hear people here at the Planning Commission being in favor of going back to the idea that this is an historical community, and we need to preserve that. And we need to preserve those structures for our, our kids and their kids. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Carlson. Anybody else like to speak in favor? Anybody in the attendees list that would like to make a comment, please just raise your hand electronically at the bottom of the screen. And you can, we'll identify you as a speaker. Okay. Seeing none. Opposition? Uh-oh, we knew there was one.
Someone take this, or can I close it?
Good evening. For the record, Deborah Ellison, Ellison Law Office, 63 Middle Street. And I am speaking in opposition. I, I do applaud the work of the Historical Commission. And I, I know that it's all well-intended. But I do represent many clients in Gloucester. I'm very familiar with the permitting process and the requirements and the challenges that property owners face when they take on a building project. And I think the threshold question is that whether this should really be a general ordinance. And I think that that's where it should end up. I do agree, believe that it will have a negative impact on the creation of new housing. City needs housing. The ordinance will hinder housing production. That's another layer of permitting and potentially another avenue of appeal. Permitting can take at best one to two years. Sometimes it's much longer. Many older homes tend to be on undersized lots or dimensionally non-conforming, and they require even more permitting. Every delay or additional permit makes construction more expensive, and it may become out of reach of the homeowner or the buyer. High interest rates result in significant carrying costs. The rising cost of materials and contractors during the delay period. Contractors or professionals may not be available at the end of the one year. Buyers may not wait. Chills sales, devalues property, and the developers will just build somewhere else. It's also an unexpected delay in cost. If you buy a home in the historic district, you know that you're going to have certain rules that you have to follow. But if you just own a home in Gloucester generally that happens to be old, you're not expecting that you're going to have to have a year delay if you decide that you need to demolish or want to demolish. Many people have inherited their homes, and it takes away equity that their families have built over generations. It's also fundamentally unfair to a property owner or a buyer for there not to be any compensation for the year's delay. It's also overly broad. As it's written, it does apply to homes that are 100 years or older or that meet those six criteria. So that is a really important fact that needs to be changed. It also is triggered by 25% demolition. So if you decide to do a little bit of work on your home, this is triggered. The building inspector may not be an expert in historic buildings, yet he's vested with virtually unfettered administrative discretion. He's likely to just forward all the demolition applications to the Historical Commission. No standards for him to follow, and it's completely arbitrary. There's no indication what documentation should be used to determine whether a building is historically significant. And if you look at number six on that criteria, all you have to have is a building that is within a certain number of feet of the historic district commission, district itself. Local in-state guidelines that need to be followed are also not defined. And I understand that these are probably ordinances and bylaws that you'll find all over the Commonwealth. But what tends to happen after having worked with municipalities for many years, everybody copies everybody else. So if you end up with a bad bylaw, everybody else is going to have the bad bylaw. So you have, I think, before you perpetuate that, you need to look at it and look at the standards. And there are no standards or definition of what is preferably preserved or not preferably preserved. There's no criteria to determine whether a building should be preserved. That opens the city and the Historical Commission up to litigation. And it promotes inequitable results. Someone may have, a lot of people show up at a hearing, and they have a delay. Someone else may not have anybody show up at a hearing, and they're not delayed. So without standards, it's very difficult for people to know or understand what they're going to be held to. Also, doesn't have any hardship considerations. If you have fire damage, flood damage, we had the fire at the house on Washington Street that according to the assessors is over 100 years old. If it were determined to be preferably preserved, that could be a year where new housing or replacement housing is not built. Economic hardship, bringing a building up to code, also very, very expensive. And a time when construction is already expensive in and of itself. It can be an unaffordable burden. No consideration given for buildings that can't be saved. Some of them are just substandard construction. We have a lot of buildings that were old cottages, summer cottages, and then everybody built around them. So you don't know. So these could be hardships that should be considered and are not in place in the ordinance. And also, we heard there's no data to suggest that these ordinances even work. No data to show what economic impact they have on the creation of housing. No data to show what impact it has on the historic properties or the owners. And I think that is an important fact that the board, this board, as well as the city council, if it goes back to them, needs to know before they enact this. It's also unfair to the owner in that the building inspector makes the first decision without having to consult with the owner or give the owner notice. The Historical Commission does the same thing. They don't have to consult with the owner or give them notice in their first determination that it's historically significant. The first time the owner has to be notified is of the public hearing, along with the abutters and along with the public. They should have an opportunity before that to explain their property, to explain their situation, which give factors that fit into a determination of whether it's historically significant. There also, the fine is in excess of what's allowed under the law. The law allows $300 per day and not $1,000 per day. So the Historical Commission, on their summary, stated that they've been discussing this ordinance since 1995. That's 30 years. It hasn't passed in 30 years. I would suggest that there's a reason for that. And as written, may not be a good fit for Gloucester. And so I'd recommend that the city gather some empirical data to show what effect these ordinances actually have, and to do a lot of work on the vague standards that we have here. Thank you very much. And I do have a memorandum summarizing my concerns that I'd like to give to the board.
Thank you, Attorney Ellison. We do have one person in the attendees, Jonathan Poor. Enable you to speak. And if you would just mind, just unmuting yourself, thank you, and name and address for the record, and keep your comments to three minutes.
Sure. Jonathan Poor, Poor &amp; Company Incorporated, 315 Washington Street, Gloucester. I've been serving the Gloucester community residence with my design business for nearly 40 years now. And in addition, I served on the Gloucester Historic District Commission for approximately 18 years, most of which I was, served as the chairman. And I've assisted in producing the Gloucester Historic District Commission design guidelines, which are currently used in the historic district, and they're currently posted on your city website. And I've done a wide variety of private-public historic preservation projects, ranging from the Sergeant Murray Gilman House to 10 Pound Island Lighthouse to Old Town Hall in Gloucester. And I'm published in the field of historic preservation. So suffice it to say, I have a fairly wide background in historic preservation. So while I appreciate the impulse of this ordinance, I would parrot many of Attorney Ellison's concerns. And what I think is important to note, she alluded to it, but I'd like to sort of zero on a little bit further, which is that what makes Gloucester actually unique is not just its history, but also for probably over 150 years, it's been not only a working seaport, but also artist retreat and a vacation destination for folks. Which means that an amazingly high proportion of the housing stock started life as summer cottages, summer camps, even fishing shacks, and other types of modest structures. And in doing my work in the last 40 years, I've come across an extraordinary number of buildings, which on the surface looked like a significant historic building with some substance to it. And then we'd start opening it up, and we'd find layers and layers of additions and alterations, often done by people without the requisite skills. And we'd actually be faced with a situation where we set out to renovate and restore the building, and we'd be faced with essentially a house of cards, where there was really nothing to hang our, our, our structure on. And so when you have a high percentage of, of housing stock that, that falls into this category, you, you need, I think, more specific criteria to, to judge whether a building is, is fitting the criteria for demolition delay. And then I would also parrot that, as Attorney Ellison mentioned, there's layers and layers of, of regulations that folks have to wade through. And what I found over my years of work is that increasingly, people are having difficulty affording this. And so what it tends to do is it's, it tends to exclude folks who have more modest means. And so, and I know that doesn't relate directly to the demolition delay ordinance, but I think that the important piece here is if, if you value your cultural and social diversity in Gloucester, let's not price these folks out of their community. So in closing, I, I support the impulse here, but as drafted, I do not support this ordinance as it's, as it's presented, for the reasons that I've outlined.
Thank you, Jonathan. Anybody else in the attendees list like to make a comment? We got one more. Mr. Stevens? Need to unmute yourself, and you're good to go. Just name and address for the record, Andy, you there? That's not, got nervous. Beverly? Oh, he's back. You should be able to speak, Andy. Okay, this is a technology problem. Beverly, why don't you make your comment while we try to work him out?
I do want to say, in my unbridled enthusiasm, that the comments of our last two testifiers really are sobering in the sense that these issues are all very complicated. And, boy, crafting something that achieves the opportunity to save housing stock, but at the same time dealing with the other issues that were raised, is, would, it's going to, would take a very deft hand to create an ordinance. And so I, I can understand the complications. I just wish there were a path forward that would enable us to create something, not us, because it's not us, but the city, to create something that would achieve this purpose, but still meet very serious issues that have been raised by some of the people here on, on our board, but also people who have testified. So I, I thank you for educating us all about this, this not, not a problem, and, and in the hope that we could find a path forward. I wish you the very best.
Thank you, Beverly. Andy, can you hear us? Okay. Well, we have a technical, technical problem with Andy Stevens. So next steps, right? I guess we're actions done with...
Yep.
Here he comes again. You there, Andy?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
On, loud and clear now.
Oh, fine. Thank God. Well, that's what happens when the dog is underneath the computer. He pulled the, pulled the line out.
Thank you.
I, I wanted to reiterate some of the points that Attorney Ellison and Jonathan Poor said. Oh, Andy Stevens, 10 Winter Haven Road, I've been here since 1981. And I've been a builder in town since the same time. First point that I'd like to make, reiterating something that Jonathan said, is that the majority of the older homes in Gloucester are structurally poorly built, exceptionally unsafe. Kids have been subjected to lead paint in these houses for hundreds of years, extremely liable to fall for fire, overrun with rodents, and extremely energy inefficient. So when people make the decision to change the house, they're doing it for a number of very good reasons. The other concern I have is that, right now, in the last year, I applied for, I think, yeah, three different demo permits, all of which took multiple months already. So whether or not we need another layer of regulatory control on top of that, I strongly doubt. Understanding, as, as the other people have pointed out, that time equals money. Any increase in regulations costs time, thus money, thus increasing costs and decreasing affordability for the general public. The other concern I have, which is one I think if you were all honest and look in the mirror, you will realize that right now, this agency is saying that they will put a 100-year limit on this ordinance. I can guarantee you, if you pass this ordinance, in the next 10 years, this will be raised, be raised to 75 years. And when my kids are actually old enough to take over, it'll be 50 years. You know this is the way bureaucracies go. And for the proof of that, they, one of the articles mentioned by these people was that they wanted to have one of the standards, any house within 150 feet of the historic district. Well, guess what? They just expanded their historic district. This is how it works. This is how regulatory control increases, costs increase, affordability decreases. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Any other comments at this late hour? Mr. McCarthy? You've got 15 seconds.
I didn't study up on this before I came here, but just listening to the nice people here and, and the board, and Andrew and others, I, I think that, I think there should be some type of demolition delay. But I think it's, it should be a lot smaller, and I think that it should start, and it may be a stepped process. Houses built in the 1600s, 1700s, and at a later point, 1800s, being able to take inventory of, I think there's 600 between 16, 17, and 1800s, if they were to look at the very early structures, some of them which had kept up. I think that if they were able to start with a small process, small amount, you're, again, 1600s, 1700s, I think, bringing something back that includes that, because it's, I'm not probably torn down more houses than anybody, and most of them have been, ones that are falling down, old summer houses, cottages. And some of those might even fall into, I know for a fact, over at Coffins Beach, into a summer cottage that was built in the 1910. So I, so I think going back and preserving the very old houses and the most valuable ones, and bringing, bringing that forward a couple hundred years. That, that's all I can say. Thanks.
Just name and record. I mean, this is a different hearing, so name and address for the record.
Chris McCarthy, Cape Ann Coffees.
Yep. Thank you. Brastree.
66 Brastree.
Thank you. We do have procedures here, you know. So I guess the discussion is, do we want to vote this evening, whether it's before us? And, or, and the discussion then is, is this a general ordinance versus?
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Given the fact that...
Given the fact that it clearly should be on the other path, do we need to take a vote, or do we need to recommend that they withdraw?
I think, you know, there's a whole hearing and testimony in minutes that'll be produced that'll give people the sense of what's happening, but I think the recommendation is not to amend the zoning ordinance with the ordinance as proposed. That will allow the ability for it to move on, and again, you don't make the final decision, but you're recommending that it not be amended with this, and then it will take on the path of pursuing the Code of Ordinances.
Would a negative vote here, saying we don't recommend changing, adopting the zoning warrants, create any prejudice in the next step along the way?
No, I mean, procedurally, you shouldn't recommend if it's not something that should be in the code, so again, I think there's the background, and typically I will provide some of that in how the board votes.
May I ask?
Yep.
If I were to... This body can't send it to the Ordinance Administration Committee, it would have to come from the council to go back to the ONG committee, but could we do something where you just recommend that it goes to the Ordinance Administration Committee, so I have that as a sort of backup to say, you're not prejudicing it?
I don't know that we have that purview.
You don't have the purview to send it there, but you could certainly say...
Plus, I can't actually recommend it as it is written.
I wasn't asking that.
I know that, but if you ask for that kind of vote, you might not like the outcome.
Understood. So would you support a formal withdrawal, so there isn't a negative vote, and then we can send it the right way?
That's your decision. And so I think you know where we're going.
Yeah.
And so, and this is your baby, so...
And then do I withdraw it for the plan of the council, in order for it to be withdrawn?
I think, if that's what your intention is, this could be continued. If that happens, then the hearing is moot. Otherwise, I mean, you just take the action, it doesn't really have any impact, because it's it's a negative vote of the council that it would impact, you know, if it were a future consideration. If it's just clearly not something that belongs in the zoning ordinance, I know the language will sound harsh. It's always in the positive, it's to recommend, and then the vote is zero to seven. So I don't know that, I mean, it's a little bit semantic at this point, if it's going to be a Code of Ordinances proposal.
So just to be very clear with my intention, my intention is to talk to the city clerk tomorrow to make sure I handle the next steps the proper way. But from what I'm hearing here, is that it needs to be in the Code of Ordinances, not in the zoning ones, and that's my intention. So if it's helpful to you to say, I'm intending to withdraw it, and you continue it so that it becomes a moot point, once it's withdrawn, it's not part of this process, that would be the preference versus a vote in favor or against, and that creates a different feeling for the counselors. Is that fair to say, I will be withdrawing this, and then you can vote to continue and decide if it just disappears on its own? Is that fair?
Sounds fair.
So I move that we continue the public hearing for the proposed Section 5.21 demolition delay.
Our next regularly scheduled...
To our next regularly scheduled meeting of...
I'm just wanting to make sure, Councilor Wirthley, you think that you'll be able to accomplish that within a two-week period, or should we extend it to four weeks, just so that we're not here again in two weeks, continuing again?
Given that there's a five-week month, it changes the council cycle, so I don't know that I can, in terms of number Tuesdays, I don't know that I can get it in or withdrawn and then resubmitted in two weeks. I can definitely do it in four weeks.
Yeah, so why don't we continue to the April 17th meeting?
Okay, so just to restate, I propose that we I move that we continue the public hearing for the proposed demolition delay to our regularly scheduled meeting of April 17.
Second.
We have a motion made by Jane Ramsden, and seconded by David Rosen. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Nope, that motion carries unanimously. We'll see you in April.
I could just thank everybody for your time, even on something that's not appropriately before you, you still provided some valuable input that we'll definitely incorporate. And even the people who opposed it, provided some very valuable input too, I just want to add that appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. Alex, I think it's up, you're up.
All right, thanks, Rick. I will just clarify that the draft comp plan has it as a recommendation to consider adopting a demolition delay ordinance. It does not say how it is, which I think is a good example of why those recommendations need to be high-level, because when you're actually implementing something, there's a lot to consider and a lot of people to consult to do it the right way, and it sounds like that's the case here. But that's a good segue into the update on the comprehensive plan. So since we last met during that meeting, we went through, actually, two meetings, went through long rounds of making revisions to the recommendations based on all the input from boards and committees and our technical working sessions to date. And since that time, we have presented the draft recommendations to department head managers with the city to get a sense of what staff, what boards would be responsible for implementing what recommendations, and to see what staff think are the highest priorities for what recommendations to look at implementing first, which will be able to align with the feedback that we've gotten from the public. We've also had a survey out at this time, which will close tomorrow. I'm happy to report that we have 840 responses to the survey, which is a lot. I think in total, we'll have around 4,000 people that have engaged in this planning process in some way, which is good to see. So we will have that survey analyzed and brought to you at the April 17th Planning Board meeting, where we will also discuss the draft content of the comprehensive plan itself. Staff has spent a lot of time making revisions to recommendations based on our meetings. And Jane has stepped in and helped in that process too. And we have been working through actually revising the content of the plan. So again, we'll look at that together on April 17. And then, once that content is finalized, it'll be brought into a nice visual document. And then we'll be able to move forward into the process. We'll agree on a draft comp plan, it'll be put out for public comment, where everybody will be able to look at it and review it, and we'll make revisions based on that, but we're looking at an end of May, early June timeline to hopefully take a vote on adopting the plan. So I think there's a light at the end of the tunnel here, and it's good to see a lot of engagement on this last phase of the process.
Congratulations, Alex. It's a tour de force to get it across the finish line. And congratulations. Rick had a bet with us about how many participation points we would get, and you were right. Great.
Thank you for that, Alex. And you want to do a couple of minutes? Minutes? Jane, you're the minutes lady. So we have February 20th, 2025. You were absent, but I'm sure you read them.
I did. Yeah, you're good.
Yeah, you're good.
You were an absent that one. Yeah, so I have no comments, but I also can't make a motion.
Go ahead, Sean. No, you were here. Oh, I am. What am I doing here? I'm just going to make a motion.
Use your mic.
Make a motion to pass the minutes for the February 20th, 2025 meeting.
We have a motion by Sean Henry. I need a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Beverly, and it's a yea or nay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There are none. The minutes from February 20th have been approved.
Oh, whoops, I have to abstain.
Oh, she abstained, thank you.
I said yes, but I meant to abstain.
Okay, January 28th of 2025, these all seem very recent.
Yep, I move that we approve the minutes of January 28th, 2025.
I have a motion, I need a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, David. So a motion by Jane Ramsden, seconded by David Rosen. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Beverly has to abstain.
He's abstentious.
Abstain.
Steve's abstinent.
She should have abstained from the previous one.
You could have watched the video or something. All right, thank you very much, everybody. We don't have anything unforeseen, do we? Fantastic. And, that's too bad. So we'd just like to welcome Steve. I appreciate your early input.
Thank you very much.
Usually takes a year to find your voice on this board, but we appreciate your comment.
And there's a lot of competition, so you did great.
So I will accept the motion to adjourn at 7:41 PM. We have a motion by Doug Cook. I need a second, please.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Sean. All in favor?
Aye. And this is in honor of Hank, right, because he always...
Yes, well, we did discuss...
Our memory of Hank is always at the end, right, just seeing him.
Thank you.